City Council meeting to order on June 8th, 2021. Roll call please.
Councilor Ojcaski?
Here.
Councilor Coles?
Aye.
Councilor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Sharaw.
Yes. I'd like to open the floor to public comments on agenda items only.
The ordinance is to apply of the United States Civil Rights and to be public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 11th, 2021 meeting. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Call the roll.
Councilman Greger?
Aye.
Councilor Ojcaski?
Yes.
Councilor Coles?
Aye.
Councilor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Sharaw.
Yes. I'd like to open the floor to public comments on agenda items only.
Because I'm in Dernie and I'm with, I mean, I'm at one address. The ordinance is 1240. We're saying we're dissolving the master plan. What, do you have another finding in place?
No, that is from Mayor Perenny's administration. It was never properly dissolved. It's when they were working on East Gate and West Gate. So it's just like sitting on the books, empty, and it's serving no purpose. So that's why it was being dissolved.
Okay, so a new council administration could dissolve anything in the past?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's an, it's an ordinance. So that's why. And council in 2016 tried to dissolve it, but they incorrectly did so by dissolving it with resolution and not an ordinance.
Okay, so how many ordinance did you people pass so far for 2020 now?
Probably like 30.
30, okay. Now, if this other group gets in January 2021, are they going to have the power to dissolve your ordinances?
Any ordinance.
So what are we doing? We're having a catfish in its tail while we're around?
I mean, we have to keep moving on.
Yeah. I just hope that the public is aware that if we keep, you know, the past group, the current group, the past group, you guys are being played as a yo-yo, and we're living in a times where all the prices are going to go up, including taxes and fees, and we cannot afford this group think mentality where I'm in one camp versus the other camp. Because you guys are going to end up paying the bills, not the actors. The profits that get in are not going to be paying the bills. The people who are voting for them are going to pay the bills. And I just want to make that clear.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
I've got a pretty big mouth, so that shouldn't be a problem. My name is Chris. I'm actually here to address the ordinance on the animal control situation. And I understand where you're going with this, but I think there might be a better way to do it. I believe, if I remember correctly, reading it, you want to limit to two dogs.
If I may, that's actually what it says now.
Now, okay. So limit to two dogs, I believe, two cats, so it was total four?
No, we would actually be raising that amount.
Okay. Here's my basic idea. I think you should limit how many animals that can be in a rental property, a duplex, an apartment, for obvious reasons. Once it's not that person's property, there is a better chance more damage is going to be done. I do believe that the dogs should be around three instead of two, but in a real property I could even see two, because again, they're outside, people have to deal with the noise and things of that nature. I could even see you saying that if you're going to have dogs on the property, the property has to be fenced in. And that way to keep, you know, the dog from running out front of cars, accidentally nipping somebody, because it's not a dog's fault, it's territorial over its yard. That's just the nature of a dog, sort of like a person you walk in their yard, they're going to look at you as a threat. Dogs don't have the mentality go, well, maybe not. So that's really not their fault either. But my main concern is, it's kind of funny to limit cats. If a cat is an indoor animal and nobody's seeing it, why would there be a limit on it? Especially when it said up to 20,000 square feet? That's like, what, one level of the White House? You can only have two cats and 20, or four cats and 20,000 square feet? I don't think there's, if you put 20 of the houses together, you wouldn't get that here. I mean, like I said, I could definitely see smaller areas of rentals. But my kind of problem is, it's like, okay, I bought my house, I paid for my house. What I do is that my house is sort of my business. I just don't see, when it's an indoor only animal, why there should be a limitation on it. What I think is a better idea is to pass a law saying that every pet within city limits has to be spayed and neutered. I think that's much more of a higher priority. And I think, you know, what the city should invest in is get one of the, the nip and stimp on wheels, low-cost banneuters that come in once a month. People with fixed incomes, people with very low incomes maybe can apply for a voucher through the city so that they can get their animals spayed and neutered. Because, okay, say you're allowed to have two cats, you're allowed to have two dogs. They're not fixed, got a male and a female each. Within six months, now you've got six puppies and you've got six cats. Another eight months delay, you've got six more cats. Another six months delay, you've got six more puppies. And because of the way that was stated, it doesn't apply to them. Well, if you're not getting them fixed, they're just mass multiplying. I think another really good thing would be to have it so that all cats have to be indoor only pets, because people are letting their cats out that aren't spayed and neutered. The males are spaying property, spraying property in order to mark their territory, and the females are getting knocked up and having babies in some of the bush, and then it becomes another person's problem, either the person that finds them or the shelter that they dropped them off on. And that doesn't seem to be fair either. So I, I think maybe just looking at this with a little bit different point of view, that you would do a lot more good and control if we focus more on getting everybody spayed and neutered. Like, you know, and give it a realistic date, by the end of a year. Eight months, 10 months, a year. By then, everybody within the city limit has to have all their animals spayed and neutered, and then go do random checks, knock on doors. I need to see your papers. Give them 30 days to fix it if they're not compliant. And again, if we are actually offering, I mean, a lot of these people that I know, because I used to help people get their cats spayed and neutered all the time. I don't have transportation. I can only afford a little bit of money. My cat just got pregnant, had six cats. Now I've got to pay to get seven cats spayed and neutered. At $100 a piece, $700, and that's a low-cost clinic. You go to a regular vet, you'll get $200, $250 a piece. With the whole pandemic, that's what's charging more because they have to see less people. So they're upping the cost. So now you're looking at $250 to $275 per cat. This gets, oh, we lost somebody.
Hold that. He's actually at the vet with his grand puppy right now. So.
It just hung up, like, I'm done hearing this.
Hello?
Hey, we lost.
Yeah.
Sorry. All right, we're just going to continue. Sorry about that.
So there was actually, there was different places that offered, like, for $25, they would spay and neuter a cat and give the rabies shot, okay? And an extra $10 if you gave it to December. So I used to actually do it so that I would load up the car and tell everybody I'm leaving at 6 o'clock in the morning on Saturday, load up the car, take 20 people down, sit up there for 10 hours, bring them back, make sure everybody came out of the anesthesia okay, and then brought them back. So if they have a means to get it done, people are willing to get their animals fixed. But we're in an area where it's very economically depressed, and it's just not accessible to a lot of people. A lot of people don't have transportation, and a lot of people don't have a ton of spare money. So I think it would be a good investment of city money to help get this problem under control. And with the fence idea, I heard about his dogs, his neighbor's dog jumping the fence, but there was actually two huskies that got loose out of their yard. They're about three months ago, and they attacked and killed my neighbor's little dog, little Chihuahua. Again, if, you know, you want to have a limit, you know, on dogs, that's good, but that doesn't keep them from getting loose. You may want to focus more on containment. They have to be in a fenced-in yard. Again, give adequate time to get it done, maybe even work with a contractor. You know, get a contractor that's willing to maybe give a discount because they're going to be getting so much business. I just think there's, we're not looking at the whole picture here. It sounds really good on paper, but it may not be as efficient when we could be addressing the bigger problem as a whole. And I don't really know how that really pertains to, like, chickens, I believe, if I read it correctly, you were allowed to have six chickens per lot, no rooster, which is obvious because of the noise.
Yeah, that's on the books too. Nothing has changed with that. I'm just putting it into one document.
Well, the only thing I got to see was the little blurb from what was shared on my news feed, but it said you got to read the rest of the article in the newspaper, which a lot of people don't get. That's something else I would like to suggest, a monthly newsletter. I mean, we've got all kinds of things going on. We're really making a huge effort to get this town moving, you know, get, you know, to actually bring it back up to what it used to be, which was a very nice town. And I truly think that people have no idea what's going on. I don't think anybody knew what the date was for the vote. I mean, we had hardly anybody show up. The only, I've seen one sign, I think yours actually had the date. That was the first time I saw the date mentioned anywhere. How are people supposed to vote if they don't know what date? The location for voting, you've got to walk the whole way around the back, and you don't even see the sign from the road. It's the whole way up by the door, which you can't see because there's a car parked in the way. How are people supposed to know where they're supposed to go? You know, we have the park thing going on. There is the amphitheater that, you know, we're going to be having concerts and stuff at. I heard somebody say something about a dog park. All this stuff people need to know. I know, what was it, last year or the year before, we did that huge cleanup? I think we could have had five times more people show up if anyone knew about it. I found out by accident, because I think I called you to ask you where I was supposed to try, and we were getting an empty lot, abandoned lot next to my mother's property cleaned out just because there was so much garbage there that it was bringing rats and raccoons and everything else into the property, and we cleaned it up. So, I mean, I didn't even find out, I found out by accident, because I was like, where can we take this stuff? You know, it's not even our property, we're just trying to get it under control. So I think there would be a lot more involvement if people knew what was going on. I mean, I'd be happy to even do it. I mean, if everybody, like, gave me the information of what's coming up next month, I'll type it up if it can be sent out to every single person in Vanessa, because a lot of people don't get the newspaper. And if you're on a big day home, that extra couple dollars is a huge deal, you know? And for a lot of people, they want to know what's pertinent to them. But I do think that if we show the people that the city really wants to be involved, they would be more willing to be involved with the city. I think there would be a lot accomplished there. So, but yeah, I just kind of think that, you had told me the story about a woman who, she got sick because she wasn't eating and she was feeding her cat, and, you know, she ended up being taken to the hospital. Restricting how many pets she had when she only had one cat would not fix that. So I, I just, I mean, that's a whole nother thing that needs to address. She, if she would have maybe had information on food banks or information on other things that were going on, or help through the Salvation Army, I mean, there is a plethora of resources in Vanessa, which is really surprising how small this town is. I think there's like eight food banks here. No one should be going without, without food. But I don't think anyone knows what's available here, and I think that's a huge problem. So restricting pets wouldn't help in that situation, but making sure that her pet can't accidentally get outside and have kittens might, you know, because then that becomes six other people's problems. You see what I'm saying? So.
When we did the, the trap neuter release program last fall, they captured like, I think, 65 cats.
Oh, I don't doubt it.
But that's just like the tip of the iceberg.
It is.
That was like in one neighborhood.
Yeah. I'm all for span, trap and release. And I also think it's really good to have a feral colony, maybe take a lot that the city owns, put up a nice little shed, have people volunteer to go and make sure there's food and water and whatnot, that, because they serve a purpose. I mean, when the Catholics chased all the cats out over, what was it, in England, and then all the rats came in, they do serve the purpose. We are on a river. Feral cats serve the purpose. So we don't want to get rid of all of them. So returning some of them to their natural habitat, getting their ears dark so you can tell from a distance they are indeed fixed, they do have their shots. I just think that, and there's a lot of people that love pets that'd be willing to volunteer, but they can't have their own. So they'd be more than happy to go down and sweep it out, make sure there's food and water. And I, it really, every place I've ever seen it done on mass scales, like, they have one in Greensburg by the Greensburg Maine Society. It's always worked really, really well. So I just, you know, I think there's just more we need to address than just saying, hey, you can only have so many animals. Because I don't think it's going to go nearly as far as it could if we did other things that would stop the mass breeding of all these unwanted animals, because they suffer in the end. You know, that's the problem. They're the ones who are left out to die in the bush, you know? And I just think that, you know, I, there would be a better way of implementing it rather than saying, hey, you own a house, but I'm going to tell you how many pets you can have in your house. Why not just say, okay, you can have, you know, unlimited cats, but they all got to be fixed, but they all got to be inside? You know, so I just think there's, there's more, a better way. Now, dogs, I get it, because they're outside, people have to listen to them, they can jump the fence, you know, they go in and out. That's a different story, and I can understand that. And I can understand in a rent situation where it's not their property and they've got less property to deal with. But for the actual homeowners, I'm really not sure indoor pets should apply, you know? Because it's sort of like saying, coming up and telling me, hey, you own your house, but you only have 10 fish in your fish tank. Why? You're never going to see them, you're not, they're not going outside the tank, they're not going outside the house. So I, I just think we need to focus more on what's relevant, what is actually causing the problem, and not what superficially sounds really good on paper. That's my two cents. Thank you.
You gave me some ideas.
Ron Moser, 25 Palone, just a couple real quick things. I don't know that it particularly messes this, but Ian Hefner talking about some of the property taxes that are being relieved. I did get a phone call from the tax deed office yesterday, as a matter of fact, and I'm not sure why they called me and didn't call the city. I told them to call the city, but they called me nonetheless. It appears that there's quite a few people that are showing up there thinking that their taxes are being relieved, and they're not being relieved. In other words, maybe the school didn't discard them, the county didn't discard them, but even neglecting all that, you still have a title transfer tax. The point being, people need to understand that this, what's going on here is the city tax, only the city tax, and it's up to the people that are getting these deeds to make sure that they've taken care of the school, the counties, and I don't think there's any way out of the title, title transfer tax. But nonetheless, people are being, maybe they're reading the headlines and not reading the final details, but critically important that they understand all these different things.
We, I agree, and I think, I think they are reading the headlines, because we have told people, the city can forgive the city taxes, they have to go, so what John does, he sends a letter to the county and the school and says, hey, we've forgiven this on this property, we're asking you to do the same, and then it's up to the school and the county, I said city, I mean county, it's up to the school and the county to do the same thing.
The county's not going to do it. I mean, that, when you do that, that becomes a judicial sale, and that wipes out all the taxes.
The county has.
That's a proper, more proper way of doing it.
The county has done it in the past. I know John has been contacted. You send them letters to you know, and they've done.
Apparently, there's still a lot of confusion, because a lot of people are complaining about that. One last question. When do the various wards within the city meet? As an example, the Blighted Property Board, Reg. 81.
They have not scheduled regular meetings, so whenever they have a meeting, it'll be advertised. So it hasn't been like, they haven't set a date where it's like, oh, we meet every fourth Tuesday.
Well, that's why it's not been advertised at all. You've met already, so.
No, it has been advertised.
Not in the newspaper, has it?
It should have been. The Blighted Property Board?
Which one were?
They had a meeting, and it would have been advertised.
I think it was then the same time that, I'll check.
Because when they met with Brian Morgan.
With Brian?
Matt, could I just make one interjection? The cat lady and him, they've mentioned they don't know, they don't get announcements, they don't get no bulletin. Would you please make use of the $7,000 website that you can do?
Yes, it just, it takes time to do it. That's the problem.
Because then they can't turn around and say, I didn't know.
You know, Mayor, on that same thing, unless I would not find it, our meetings aren't even on the website.
Yes, because I did not have a chance to update it. But they're being advertised and they're going to the public now. So I was doing that when COVID was happening and people weren't able to attend. That, that's when that was very important to do. If you have something for the, from the agenda, if not, you'll have to wait until the end, if that's. Oh, sorry. If you have a question on the agenda items, if not, you'll have to wait till the end, if that's okay? All right. Moving on to correspondence, we have correspondence from David Pashfield of the Emergency Management Agency and the Commonwealth, serving as acknowledgement of the recommendation to appoint Michael Single to serve as Emergency Management Coordinator for the city. They're passing that on to the governor's office for review and appointment, so we're waiting on hearing back from the governor on that. There's no action that the city has to take. I have minutes from the Human Relations Commission for May, if anyone would like to review those, and also from the Shade Tree Commission from April. I have issued a Juneteenth proclamation for June 19th, 2021. And for those that don't know, it's a holiday that happens on the fourth Saturday, third and fourth Saturday of June. Each year, it commemorates the Emancipation Proclamation that Lincoln issued freeing the slaves. So it's very important that we acknowledge that, and I've issued this proclamation.
Can I correct that?
Oh, sure.
It's actually not the one that Lincoln passed, it was actually, it commemorates the day that the Union soldiers actually went and announced to everybody, said, no release.
In Texas, right?
Yeah, it was months ago, and you were actually on El Grande. So that was the day that they celebrated, that they, you know, they were actually told, no, you really do have to release everybody, so.
Yeah, thank you. And on, in, in that same spirit, we're having a Juneteenth ceremony on June 19th at noon. It'll be right outside here in the courtyard. We're putting together a program with the Human Relations Commission. It's the first time that the city's ever done something like this, so I think it'll be really nice. We'll also be reading the Emancipation Proclamation at the ceremony. So hopefully, we get a lot of young people there, because I think it's real important that they learn that and hear that. Joseph's Nursery has informed the city that 20 benches have been purchased through donations that residents and community members have made in memory of loved ones. Several benches were installed at the amphitheater, and anyone interested in donating a tree or bench may do so by contacting City Call or they can contact Joseph directly. The rest of the benches are in back order, so they'll be coming in throughout the summer as they get them. Some will be going to Ninth Street Park, some will be going to Sixth Street Park, and the rest will be going to City Park. And some of the old benches that are rotting at City Park will be replaced too. We've been able to get in touch with some of the families of the benches that have plaques on them that are old, and they're willing to replace them. So it's really nice to see. There's no old business, so I'll hand it over to the city treasurer, Terry Sackron.
Mayor Sharaw and council. This is my report for the month. Garbage fees and city real estate taxes collected for the month of May. Garbage fees current, $4,405, year-to-date, $303,899.94. Budget amount for 2021 is $370,000. Delinquent garbage for May, $6,703.54. Portnoy collected $4,293.53 of this amount. Year-to-date, $60,701.61. Portnoy collected $24,144.2. Budget amount, $120,000. Interest and penalties on this came to $2,923.47. Garbage fees housing quarterly, we received nothing this month from the county. Year-to-date, we received $30,517.50. Budget amount was $80,000, giving us a total of collection, $570,000. Garbage fees collected for 2022, $25 for May. Year-to-date, $765.20. Budget amount, $60,000. City real estate taxes revenue, city real estate taxes current for May, we received Year-to-date, $1,866,989. The budget amount for $1,457,000 go to the general fund. Dep service fund will receive $500,000. Parks will receive $250,000, and the library fund will receive $50,000, for a total of Delinquent city taxes, prior year collected by the city, received nothing this month. Year-to-date, $3,612.14. Budget amount, $9,100. Collected by Portnoy this month, received nothing. In year-to-date, we received nothing. City real estate taxes collected by Westmoreland County, this month, nothing. Year-to-date, $43,750.20. Budget amount, $210,000. Tax claim year-a-quarterly, year-to-date taxes, $1,914,351.34. Distribution is as follows for the city real estate tax distribution. The general fund received $1,235,804.12. Dep service fund received $424,092.1. Parks received $212,046.1. And the library fund received $42,409.20, for a total of $1,914,351.34. Also, a one mil is equal to $58,430.63 for the millage fees. Payment of taxes for the month, the treasurer's department received for the month of May, Also, now, another report, real estate transfer taxes, we received in May, $9,627.62. Year-to-date, $34,200.96. Budget amount, $60,000. Earned income tax, May we received $57,032.13. Year-to-date, $231,918.17. Budget amount, $650,000. Mercantile tax, in May we received $6,264.71. Year-to-date, $11,109.09. Budget amount, $28,000. Local service tax, May we received $7,049.76. Year-to-date, $26,102.84. Budget amount, $77,000. Tax certifications, May we received $2,720. Year-to-date, $9,670. Budget amount, $22,000. Municipal lien letters, May we received $1,950. Year-to-date, $6,450. Budget amount, $16,500. Mayor, that concludes my report. I need a motion, please.
Motion to approve the president's report of reds. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilor Coles?
Aye.
Councilor Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Greger?
Councilman Greger? I know he's there.
Yeah, it's not cut off.
Dawn, can you hear us?
I, I, what do you?
Oh, sorry.
Councilman Greger?
Aye.
Councilor Ojcaski?
Yes.
Mayor Sharaw?
Call the roll.
The general fund continues bank checking account. The bank reconciliation as of May 31st, 2021. The beginning bank balances of April 30th, 2021 was $889,815.
The few years we.
Two years, we, we had to take the workers' compensation through the state government because we could not be in the private industry. Our percentages were too high of usage of that insurance. This year, we just received today, the insurance was increased from $95,000 to $119,000. So we went out to the private industry, and we were able to get insurance through them, and it's $66,931. So we're going to save fifty-some-odd thousand dollars over the next year. And we've had less workers' compensation claims last year and this year, so we're going in the right direction. And two years ago, we were $211,000. Ninety-five last year, and sixty-six this year. So we're doing the right things.
Call the roll.
Pastor Gregor?
Don!
Don.
Hello?
Don.
Now, we'll go to him next. Pastor Lord Jakowski, good. Councilman McColl?
Yes.
Pastor William Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Are you there?
He said aye.
Oh, okay.
And Mayor Sherrill?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry!
It's okay. I'll be there, sure.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve giving a portion of Fourth Street from Donner Avenue to its northern terminus street honorary named Albert Lexi Way. As a shoe shine, Mr. Lexi raised over $200,000 in tips and donated them to Children's Hospital for the Children's Care Fund. Is there a second? And just, some of you that come to the meetings regularly probably have an idea of what I'm doing, maybe. All of the dead-end streets, First Street through the end, that go to the railroad tracks, we've named them after a historical event or a person that is dead. No naming of living people that have done something for the city or contributed. So, you know, we have JFK Way, Fred Feldman Way, and now Albert Lexi Way. Any questions? Call the roll.
Pastor Lord Jakowski?
Yes.
Pastor McColl?
Yes.
Pastor William Thomas?
Yes.
Pastor Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Sherrill?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion giving a portion of Second Street from Donner Avenue to its northern terminus street honorary named William Miller Way. Miller was Menneson's first fire chief in the early 1900s. Is there a second?
Second.
And this is basically the entrance to the fire department parking lot, which is live. Any questions? Call the roll.
Pastor McColl?
Yes.
Pastor William Thomas?
Yes.
Pastor Gregor?
Aye.
Pastor Lord Jakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Sherrill?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to forgive the property taxes for 484, city property taxes for 484 McKee Avenue. Tax map number 2002030343. The development agreement has been signed, and a copy of the deed has been submitted. Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Pastor Lord Jakowski?
Yes.
Pastor McColl?
Yes.
Pastor William Thomas?
Yes.
Pastor Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Sherrill?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to forgive city property taxes for 642 Knox Avenue. Tax map number 2002060215. The development agreement has been signed, and a copy of the deed has been submitted. Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Pastor McColl?
Yes.
Pastor Thomas?
Yes.
Pastor Gregor?
Aye.
Pastor Lord Jakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Sherrill?
Yes.
I just, what I wanted to say, these two properties, these people went through the right steps to get to them. One of the problems that the people are having, they're calling Greensburg, and Greensburg has a set itinerary. It goes through a sheriff's sale, goes through an onset, stop-set sale, goes through judicial sale. The problem with that is that sometimes it takes anywhere up to seven years, eight years, and by that time, the houses aren't worth repairing. So what we're doing is, it's totally something different. We're trying to get the houses before the roofs go and everything. And by, by going through the city first, we approve it, then I write a letter to the school board and say, the city has forgiven the taxes. We requested you forgive the tax also. And then, when I get that reply, I send it on to the county, and then it gets approved. We get people into a house much sooner and much less repair that money to go into that house by doing this. And so, so when they're calling the county, the county's thinking about their system, and we have something, we're circumventing their system to get it out faster.
And there are, there are 55 properties that there are people interested in these abandoned properties, and those properties, they can't find the owners. Because the problem is, and we've talked about this at past council meetings, LLCs own them, deceased people own them, people that don't want to be found own them, and you obviously can't get someone to sign the deed over if you can't find them. So there's 55 properties that qualify for the land bank, which council approved in March, and we're waiting for the school board to hopefully approve it this month. There's a total of fifty, over $50,000 in tax revenue that could be had per year, as the tax rates stand now for those particular properties, if they are put into the hands of people who will fix them, so.
Right now, we have a total of four and a half million dollars in taxes that will never be collected. We're never going to get it.
A decade's worth.
They haven't paid it, and there's no reason for them to pay now. It went into the judicial system. Problem with, well, it's one good thing if we could get into the system and get estates opened up and get the property. The problem is, it takes six months to go through all the procedures.
At least.
At least six months. So if we start now, by the end of the year, they'll, they'll be able to get access to those properties where we can't find the people that own them. And now, the other side of it is, if there's two children per family, and we have fifty-some-odd homes that people could get into, that's over 104 students, 106 students for our school district. We graduated 62 students this year. So we have the potential of increasing the educational process with other people coming in and doing it. So we're having a difficult time understanding why they're tabling this potion. Four and a half million dollars you're not going to get, the potential of $50,000 in taxes right now, and children coming into your school district, which would mean job security for teachers.
And houses sitting rotting away.
Yeah. So there's a lot behind it. It takes a lot of work to go through it. I know, working with the Redevalment Authority, we make up quick deeds, and properties they own, we send it to them, and we're moving properties, and hopefully, it will, you know, continue on. But we just had a young lady that bought a home over here, that the house has been vacant for seven, eight years. And right now, she's going to get the home for a few dollars. And instead of paying rent, they're going to use the money to repair the house. Now they have a house, not renting, and she would have never been able to get a home, or at least for a few years, anyway. So it, it's fulfilling for us, and I know Cheryl really enjoys this, helping somebody to get a home. And there are so many out there, we're just waiting for everybody to get on board and get moved over there.
You're here.
Aye.
In person.
I apologize.
We're on item G on the second page.
I remember, item G, G. Oh, yes, that's right, you wrote it down.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a 2021 Ford Explorer Interceptor vehicle at $43,811, the CoStar pricing from C Harper. Finances will be handled as a loan over four years. The vehicle is to replace the totaled vehicle. Restitution claim has been filed with Westmoreland County Office of the District Attorney. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
No questions, Mayor. There is nothing in our packet about the loan.
Don, do you have anything?
No, it, it will be done through the auto company. I haven't received any paperwork. I need to get it approved first, so I can get that moved.
Okay, but there's no, nothing stating about an interest rate or anything either. I, I fully understand we need to replace the car, but we don't have any documentation, even a negative consideration for the interest rate, food, the loan with, and everything else.
I'll have to get that.
Is it a loan or is it?
It's a loan.
It'll be a loan.
It's an actual loan?
Yeah.
No, dude. I'm sorry, someone was asking, was it an insurance claim?
Oh, no. I was, I was just asking if it was truly a loan or if it was a lease under the arrangements that were made to purchase it, so.
Well, this would be a leased loan. It's how we bought all of ours in the past.
So is this also a leased loan?
Well, that's true, but we were fortunate enough, we didn't have to do that. We got the money from that lawsuit, of course, and it.
Didn't we get $34,000 for?
Yeah, we just, we just paid for one cash for the first total. And this one, I used the money to get the car. This one, we have the, well, we'll get the $9,000 eventually from the county, but, yeah, we'll have to take out. I'll have to get it from the C Harper.
So the insurance didn't cover the car at all?
This is the second one.
Right, so we, nothing was covered for that?
Pardon me?
So none of our insurance didn't cover any of this? They didn't approve, like, when you total a car, you don't, they didn't get anything for this?
The first car, we had received $9,000 worth. It was, it was, it had about 100 miles, 100,000 miles, 120,000 miles. It was worth $45,000, two less running, but it was only worth $9,000 with the insurance paid.
And what about the second one? Was it one of the newer vehicles, and we didn't get anything?
The second one is the newer one.
Right.
And we got $34,000.
$34,000, right. So I took the $34,000 to pay for the first one, so we could get that car cash. Now, we'll have to put this one on. Hopefully, we'd have the more total cars than it did.
So should we?
Well, we can wait till next month, then. Find out.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if we don't have readily available for all of you guys the information on that, then it would be appropriate to table it.
Item H. Motion to approve the lowest responsible bidder, Urban Design Ventures LLC, for planning services in general consulting to assist the city of Menneson to administer the fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2021, and fiscal year 2022 CDVG programs. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions?
Question, Mayor. Two things on that. One, John, were they the, were they the only ones that submitted anything?
They were the only ones, just put it.
Okay. And I guess my real question would have been if there was two of them. The lowest responsible bidder, there is no bid on it, is it? Is it a proposal? I mean, they're not paying anything to do it.
No.
They're saying, here's our services, here's the packet. Yeah, here's what we're doing.
Because, yeah, because it's professional service, it doesn't have to be bid out to the lowest responsible bidder. But that's why this sheet that was also included with, with those items, one of these sheets would have had to have been done, or one row, for every proposal that was received to score it, and then you'd have to select, you know, whoever scored the highest based on that evaluation on that sheet.
So we just had, why do we have two then?
One's for engineering.
So one's a different one?
One's for engineering.
That one's for engineering.
So we only got one folder. Urban benches is the only one we got.
Call the roll.
Pastor McColl?
Aye.
Pastor William Thomas?
Yes.
Pastor Gregor?
Aye.
Pastor Lord Jakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Sherrill?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the lowest responsible bidder, WEC Inc., to provide professional engineering services to the city of Menneson for fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2021, and fiscal year 2022 CDVG programs. Is there a second?
Right.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Pastor William Thomas?
Yes.
Pastor Gregor?
Aye.
Pastor Lord Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman, Councilman McColl?
Yes.
Mayor Sherrill?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve replacing the unsafe sidewalk on the right side of Donner Avenue. The lowest responsible bid was received from Joseph's Nursery at $21,000 to perform the work. We were able to get three quotes, since it was under the threshold. And do I have a second, and I'll explain a little more?
I'll second.
This particular section of sidewalk will start around Dollar General area, a little before that. Basically, everything on the right side of Dollar General, or right side of Donner Avenue, that is, that old brick paver, will be removed and concrete will be put in. So there are sections where there's bricks missing, there are sections where there's holes. The last time the sidewalk was replaced was under Mayor Delfonso, when the concrete canopies were put in the canopies. So it's long overdue. So this will fix a safety issue. Any questions? Call the roll.
Pastor Gregor?
Aye.
Pastor Lord Jakowski?
Yes.
Pastor McColl?
No.
Pastor William Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Sherrill?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve Armory Locksmith, Armory Locksmith to purchase $19,975 NDAA compliant equipment for camera installations in the Menneson Police Department. Resolution 16 of 2021. The Westmoreland County District Attorney will distribute $19,975 to cover the purchase. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions?
Question, Mayor. I know, I understand that the DA's offices matching what are in the foster. Did we know, look for three bids?
We did not. Not that I'm aware of.
Is it CoStar vendor?
I believe so.
Pardon me?
Post CoStars.
Oh, for cameras and that?
Is this the same?
No.
Why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we have gotten bids for it?
Actually, I can try to get into CoStars, but. We, I mean, and I know it takes time, and it's time-consuming, and not always the most efficient, but your options are either to go through CoStars to find a CoStars vendor, or to get three bids to select from those three bids for, for an amount that's this amount. So those would be the three, or the two options. Either CoStars, if this one's not a CoStars, then we'll apply the three bids.
I'll wait to table that as well.
I know, yeah, we should table that.
Next, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 16 of 2021, a resolution for the purpose of purchasing surveillance cameras and related equipment to enforce the Controlled Substance, Drug, Device, and Cosmetic Act. Westmoreland County District Attorney intends to distribute $19,975 to the city of Menneson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
This is to accept the funds.
So until we do a motion to accept the funds, the DA doesn't give us the funds?
Correct. Okay. Call the roll.
Pastor Lord Jakowski?
Yes.
Pastor McColl?
Yes.
Pastor William Thomas?
Yes.
Pastor Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Sherrill?
Yes.
Mayor, do you have an idea where these cameras are going?
I forgot to ask him. I know you asked me, but I did forget to ask him. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution seventeen of 2021, a resolution to reimagine Appalachia in support of a federal Appalachian climate infrastructure plan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And this is just a non-binding resolution, it's basically a support letter, as we discussed last week. Any questions?
So it's just a letter saying, hey, would you like what you're doing?
Basically, and to encourage them, to encourage Congress to pass the funding, because it would impact us as well. Call the roll.
Councilman Coles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Greger?
Aye.
Councilman Orzakaski?
Yes.
Mayor Sharaw?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution eighteen of 2021, a resolution to authorize applying for and accepting the first disbursement of the American Rescue Plan municipal funds, to deposit such funds into a separate account for administration and accounting purposes, to authorize the opening of such account, to authorize the mayor, city administrator, and city clerk to execute such forms and documents as are necessary to receive such funding and opening such account, and to authorize city officials and employees to take any actions to effectuate this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
This is to accept the funds from Congress's American Rescue Plan. We are due to receive three hundred and forty-something thousand dollars this year, I think. We get half this year, half next year. And there are stipulations on how we can spend it and what we can spend it on, just soliciting, not on the phone, yeah. We lower a second of it.
Mayor.
Yeah, so I made the motion to lower a second of it, sorry. Any questions?
Tim?
Yes, sir.
Was this the great thing that you sent us that really we had to try and read it?
I'm not sure if this was, this relates to that calculation methodology that you sent out. Yes, yes. That, there, the before uses, that calculation methodology was related to that third use. So that was just an email to kind of give you a sense of what you could do from a planning perspective, to get a sense of what that number would be to use a portion of these funds for. So, yeah, but that relates to that, yeah.
Thank you.
Call the roll.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Greger?
Aye.
Councilman Orzakaski?
Yes.
Councilman Coles?
Yes.
Mayor Sharaw?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a Resolution nineteen of 2021, a resolution of the city of Menneson, Westmoreland County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, accepting a blight remediation grant award from the Commonwealth Finance Agency. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Last July, council authorized me to write the grant for the stabilization of five-hundred Donner Avenue. That resolution, I think it was Resolution twenty of 2020, we were awarded a hundred and ninety-nine thousand...
Four hundred.
Thank you. Hundred and ninety-nine thousand four hundred eighty-eighty dollars. There is a thirty-thousand-dollar match on the grant. We've had extensive conversations over the last six years on this project, everyone knows. What this grant was written to do, it would stabilize the roof, it would get the trees out of the balconies and stabilize the stonework, and board up the windows, and clean it up. And then the intent, and this was also written in the grant, would be to find a buyer for the building, so that it's not sitting there. And the cost of demolishing it, according to the city engineer, is about eight hundred thousand dollars. We're not going to sell an empty lot for eight hundred thousand dollars. So we would never recruit that money. The city owns the property, so we have residents saying last, at last month's meeting, and they are right, that if we're going after other residents to keep up with their properties and we're not taking care of our own, that's not great. So we do own the building. There has been buyers interested in the past, but that hasn't come to fruition. There has been a few people that have shown interest recently, but nothing has materialized as of yet. But the purpose is to stabilize it so that we can market it for sale as is. So with that, are there any questions?
Yeah, Mayor, I really have to question why we need to waste a penny for a building now.
Do you have eight hundred thousand dollars to demolish it?
Well, before we talked about eight hundred thousand, you're right, to demolish it, we were working with the state, with the National Guard, and where we can have them, to have them committed to it.
Well, you...
The point is, we don't have thirty thousand dollars in a matching fund to put at the high line.
I spoke with Cheryl and John and we do.
Where? Where's a line item in the budget that says whatever you want?
There's no line item in the budget, but the fund, the funds are there.
I don't understand where the funds are if every line item matches up, matches everything at the end of, for the end of the year.
Again, the question is, do you have eight hundred thousand dollars to tear it down? Because there was six years spent to find money to demolish it, and it never materialized. And here, it took me a year to find money to fix it. So obviously, the Commonwealth has interest in stabilizing it.
But it is, there's no inside to it.
It's going to stabilize it enough to sell it, and then it's not our problem anymore.
Situation is that you have a building that's kind of a hazard. If we don't, yeah, it's mid-length that, Nancy. But what's going to happen when something comes down and kills someone? This way, you get the building stabilized. Is it going to cost us some money? What's the value of a life? Is thirty thousand dollars too much to ask?
I waited fifteen years for that whole day, see, the fall still hasn't fallen.
Yeah, but, but if we stabilize the building, and there has been people that have been interested in it. As a matter of fact, when I ran for office, I was approached by Mr. Fien, and I was introduced to someone that wanted the building. But he was told by an individual from redevelopment, so where do you get out of town?
Do they know how much it would cost?
Yes, the individual had done extensive work in other structures like this. He said to me and to Mr. Fien at the time, the building has good bones.
Well, it has a good root underneath.
It does.
Intentional.
But the thing is, how are we going to stabilize it? How are we going to make it safe for the citizens to walk by? If someone in your family gets struck by a stone falling off that building, is it worth thirty thousand dollars for them to be in?
I understand the stability, it's...
It's, the stability, the stability is an issue.
If...
If those trees continue to grow, they're going to force a collapse.
I know, okay. Well, what exactly would it take to stabilize? I mean...
They're going to put a roof on it.
Yes.
They're going to, they're going to board up, they're going to fix the building so it's not going to fall down.
Get the trees out of the balconies, do any necessary stone repair.
So you already had an engineer going and figuring this all out and mapped all this, what it's going to take to stabilize?
I worked with Tony on it, by tell.
But he's not a structural engineer?
He's not, but I mean, it's common sense that you have to get the roof fixed, and you have to get the stonework fixed, and you have to get the trees out of it.
But we talked about property, all of our city property up to code. Again, inside that building, the floors have collapsed completely.
No, they have not. They're full of pigeons, it's the world's biggest birdhouse.
There's a couple of feet of water in the basement.
There's an intentional aqueduct. It's in, City Council minutes nineteen oh two, an aqueduct was dug to the river to build the building to act as buoyancy for the structure because it's so...
The building was condemned.
No, and it doesn't matter. If the city condemns the building, it's the city's building. We're fixing our building so that we can sell it, so that someone else could put money into it and do what they want with it, and then it's not our problem and not our expense anymore.
But it could be a hazard issue also.
It is a hazard issue now. It's full of dead pigeons. It needs, yes, it needs cleaned out. That's part of the stabilization, it has to be cleaned out.
The other question I would have, and this would be to Tim, I know Lois and I got a text from Senator Stephan, who was talking, telling us about this was approved, okay? But half of this is only going to be rewarded this year. The other half is going to get rewarded next year. I hate to say this, I don't mean to say this, but I'm just going to say it, I'm sorry. Over half or three-quarters of this council will not be here next year. And I guarantee you, the remaining council that is here is not going to turn that around.
I will make sure that I work to find a buyer for the building before the end of the year, so that it's not the city's problem any longer.
I just, I can't see, that thing was...
I know, I feel...
Someone said it costs eight million dollars to fix that thing.
No. And if it's eight million of someone else's money, it's not our business.
Actually, the individual I talked to told me it would take about two-point-seven million dollars to bring it up to where he'd want it to be.
Oh, boy.
And the guy, the guy that wants it has some really nice plans for it.
That's a great building, it's too bad it wasn't saved forty years ago, worked on.
It's been vacant longer than I've been alive.
It's too bad it wasn't saved six years ago when they had the opportunity.
Oh, that was way beyond fixing then, too.
No, it wasn't.
This was never maintained throughout the many years it's been in.
I would agree with you.
That's what I meant about saving it.
But the problem is, we have to do something with the structure now. If we stabilize the structure, we've done something with it. Because we're never going to be able to afford to tear it down. And maybe next council, next year, they'll have somebody come in and tear it down, they'll find somebody to do it, and it won't cost the city anything. God bless them. But right now, it needs stabilized, or someone's going to get hurt.
Well, it actually makes sense to spend the thirty thousand dollars now to fix it and then sell it, say, even if it's for yourself for a hundred thousand dollars. For an investor, that's getting the pocket big plan of putting that kind of money into it, and then you better still turn a profit. There's nothing lost.
Are there any other comments from council, on this?
Do we have actual bids and cost estimates of what you're proposing to want to do to it, actually have them?
It's in the grant application, that is a...
No, no, do we have them from firms that would...
No, that's what the next motion is.
You have to, you have to approve the grant, then you have to...
So, so, so maybe asked another way, this may not be the question, but if it is, the hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars, take here.
Ninety-nine.
Or a hundred ninety-nine, thank you. That number came from where? Where is that an estimate? And are we reasonably confident that that is a sufficient enough estimate as to what the actual cost to legitimately stabilize?
I worked with WEC to get some estimates, pre-estimates from agencies, just to get an idea of what it was.
The WEC works and then brought some estimates of what that work would actually cost, and that's where those figures came from.
It's like, like, this much square foot of roof would be X, and this much square foot of stone repair would be Y.
But the grant was originally for, if I'm, please correct me if I'm wrong, there, three hundred thousand dollars you did try to get.
Correct. It is a reduction.
So that's making me think it's going to, if you were trying to get three hundred thousand, that's how much you're going to put into it.
The, what is not included is replacement of the windows. That's what we did not get approved for. There are seventy-two windows in the building, and all of them are different sizes. So that's, that's what is not approved. But the roof portion was, that's the most important.
And the stonework, that we could get the windows boarded up and get that building closed up, because it's a health hazard.
Yeah.
You watch the pigeons going in and out of there, it's ridiculous.
But where are they supposed to go?
I'm sure they'll find another building.
You can open a poop up at your house, put some food out.
They'll probably move to the hotel.
But they count, they all think that ownership will be here.
All right, call the roll.
So, I have one last question, I'm sorry. This is, like Dawn mentioned here, and I didn't see it. All right, the next motion is advertising the acceptance of bids. What happens if we got one ninety-nine and bids come in for two fifty, two seventy-five, three hundred thousand?
Then we can't do it.
Then you don't do it.
We don't know what the bids are going to come in. We have what the quotes are, but they're just quotes.
If you don't, if you don't get the bid that you can afford, then you just don't do it. If you don't try to do it, you never know what it's going to cost you. And then we just end up with that, I swear, it continues until when? Till we're dead?
Call the roll.
Councilman Orzakaski?
No.
Councilman Coles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
No.
Councilman Orzakaski?
No, again.
Or else, Councilman Greger?
Aye.
Mayor Sharaw?
Yes. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the advertising, advertising the acceptance of bids for the five-hundred-dollar Avenue stabilization project. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Coles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
No.
Councilman Greger?
Yes.
Councilman Orzakaski?
No.
Mayor Sharaw?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twelve hundred and thirty-eight, the final reading, and ordinance of the city of Menneson, Westmoreland County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending ordinance five of two thousand and four, ordinance ten seventy-three, and any subsequent amendments pertaining to the Uniform Construction Code of the city of Menneson and providing for an effective date. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Is that the one about the animals?
No, that's next.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Call the roll.
Councilman Coles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Greger?
Aye.
Councilman Orzakaski?
Yes.
Mayor Sharaw?
Yes. I would like to table the animal ordinance, because I would like to take her comments into consideration and see what we can change in the ordinance some more, and look at it more in depth.
Yeah, I think that, I think we should, I think that would give us more time, because I really am telling you, I didn't have time to really dig, dig into this, we only had a week.
I like, I like the idea of the spay and neuter especially, and I would like to table it, so maybe we can introduce it next month. Thank you.
I can talk again, I mean, or I can even talk to you.
Yeah, and if you, I would really appreciate any input or anything like that.
Definitely, because sometimes it just helps out a different point of view. You know, things look good on paper, but unless you've been in the middle of it in practice, you may not be seeing all sides of it, so.
Right, thank you. So we'll table this one, and we'll see what we can change.
Maybe you can cut a couple more pages down.
Maybe, maybe we could get it down to twenty.
That would be impressive.
We're down to twenty-four now, from twenty-eight, so. I'd like to make a motion to adopt, or to conduct the first reading of ordinance twelve forty, an ordinance of the city of Menneson, Westmoreland County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, dissolving the master plan conference, repealing ordinance eleven of nineteen sixty-seven, ordinance six fifty-four, and providing for an effective date. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And again, this is, this is the plan that was used when they were developing Eastgate and Westgate, it was just never dissolved, it doesn't serve a purpose anymore, and council tried dissolving it in twenty sixteen by a resolution, but it's, it was created with an ordinance, so you have to dissolve it with an ordinance. Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Greger?
Aye.
Councilman Orzakaski?
Yes.
Councilman Coles?
Yes.
Mayor Sherrod?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Julian Naheer to the vacant position on the youth and young, or, the vacant young adult position on the youth and young citizens board. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Mayor, Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilor Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Coles?
Aye.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Sherrod?
Yes. And I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marsha Adams to a vacant educator's position on the youth and young citizens board. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Coles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Sherrod?
Yes. And there are two youth positions still open on this board. Um, if you know any juniors or seniors at the high school, they would be eligible. Um, and there's one educator position open, still retired or active educator. An educator doesn't technically mean teacher, so if you like work with youth or anything like that. And police report for the month ending May twenty twenty-one. Total receipts collected for May twenty twenty-one is two thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-nine cents. Some highlights from the calls for service log. Fifteen residential alarms, fifteen non-reportable, one hundred and four assist EMS, nine assist other LEA including code enforcement, seventeen domestic complaints, eleven fax requests for investigation, thirty-four fight afraid, seventeen follow-up investigations, ten fraud forgery including internet fraud, twenty-four hearings, one hundred and one miscellaneous calls for service, six overdoses, nine patrol checks including county-owned property, eighty-one registration checks, fourteen suspicious person auto or circumstance, and one hundred and thirty-nine vehicle stops, and eleven warrants, warrant checks and arrests, and ten welfare checks. Total calls for May, seven hundred and forty-three. The total for Westmoreland County Department of Public Safety is eight hundred and twenty-six, and our total year-to-date calls are three thousand three hundred and twelve. Arrests for May twenty twenty-one, total one hundred and sixty-three, year-to-date total six hundred and eight. Total miles, six thousand eight hundred and ninety-five, and an average miles per day is two hundred and twenty-two point four two for the month. And that is all for the police report, and I will hand it over to Councilwoman Coles.
Evening, everyone. Our streets report for May twenty twenty-one. Um, as usual, emptied their garbage cans throughout downtown twice a week, answered eighteen P A one calls, put up several signs, do not litter, street signs, patched cold, cold patched the streets, put millings in two alleys, planted flowers at East Gate Memorial, cut city properties, put in the catwalk at the boat launch, and opened the bathrooms, stained the benches at Shawnee Park, helped the parks as needed, and got everything ready for Memorial Day with the flags. Uh, Maple Street paving will be completed this week for the water department project. There will be a motion to approve the lowest responsible bidder, El Grande Industries, Inc. of Dunore. They bid one hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty cent to perform the paving project. A total of five companies bid on a McProject for Euclid Drive.
I will second that motion. Is, are there any questions?
Do we have any idea when that's gonna start?
I, I figure in the next couple of weeks, I would assume.
Yeah, I would hope so, in the next couple of weeks, well, as soon as we have it approved, I'll, I'll put a letter to him to proceed.
And the, um, the expected, uh, cost of this was two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, and it came in at one hundred and fifty-five thousand, so we'll have some money to work with to maybe do another project as well. Um, any questions on this stuff, this motion? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor? Councilor Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Coles?
No.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Sherrod?
Yes.
Okay, um, we now have the, um, the library report. Um, the library resumed their regular hours on May tenth, and, um, they're celebrating their eighty-fifth anniversary in twenty twenty-one and planning to have some events whenever that is possible. The children's coordinator, Marsha Adams, resumed the in-person activities at the library. They will have the summer reading club will kick off on June sixteenth at five-thirty with an event at the library. The Friends of Library will also be having their annual spaghetti dinner fundraiser in the month of August at Felicious Restaurant. And, um, two of the upcoming programs for this summer include programs with the Westmoreland Symphony Orchestra and the Pittsburgh Ballet Company. Um, the end, the May twenty twenty-one R D, redevelopment authority report, they comp, they compiled all the paperwork for two thousand nineteen through twenty twenty-one as requested by Mayor Sherrod for a write-to-know request and responded to him with a letter explaining the cost of duplication and availability. All the properties received from the city were moved to the R D A as per the city's request. Quit deeds were prepared for all the end-users and work is being completed to get them moved to the end purchaser of the properties. And those are my reports.
Thank you. Councilman Orzakowski?
Thank you, Mayor. My report will make two points. Cleaned the civic centers needed, cut city parks and ballfields, picked up litter in the parks, stained the pavilion at the boat launch, brought pavilions ready for restaurant, reservation, ordered lights for the fire station and city hall, brought bathrooms open and water turned on at the boat launch, helped the streets department as needed, and new grills taken for the pavilions. I have a question, Mayor.
Uh-huh.
What was the cost, it's a nice idea, what was the cost for the, for the grills, and what kind of grills are they?
They're those regular barbecue grills that replaced the other ones that were rusted out. John, do you know what the cost was? I don't remember off the top of my head.
Uh, yeah, they were fourteen hundred and fifty dollars. Thank you. Uh, motion to approve Cummings, Inc., planned equipment maintenance agreement, term is for five years, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five. Payments pay as you go, annual payment is nine thirty-two seventy-four. We can guarantee the maintenance on a generator for the public safety building.
Second. Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilor Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Coles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Sherrod?
Yes. And I just wanted to say, um, while I'm thinking of it, I was informed today that, um, in the air conditioning unit in the library, one of the compressors went. It was in the library today, and it's like eighty degrees in there. Um, so I mentioned to John this afternoon, so we're gonna have to get that looked at and see what's going on there, because it's very, very hot in there.
And grills, five grills have been purchased for City of Menneson Park, uh, the Herman Mahal River Launch, and one, Ninth Street Park is one, and three City Parks. They're all, they're all in stoke as of today. Now, how are we making, I mean, this is the first I've heard of getting grills, which is kinda interesting, because this is my department. But how are we going to maintain these going forward? Or do people, when they rent a pavilion, do they have this, whatever grills next to them they can use? Are they just charcoal?
Yeah, they're just those charcoal grills. There were three existing grills at each of the pavilions at City Park, and they all rusted out, because they're probably like forty years old at this point. So, um, that's why.
So, is, is there gonna be a policy in place that if someone rents a pavilion, that they're responsible to get, make sure they don't leave hot holes? That there be, they have to clean it out, or they're gonna make a streaky?
I think there's already, I think there's already something in place, but I could check.
I mean, a lot of places require you to clean it all up, it can't be left there.
Well, we could add it to the reservation form for the rental.
And if, if somebody doesn't clean it up, are we asking the streets or the park guys to clean it up? I just want those questions out there, I mean, honestly.
And technically, you don't have to, you, like, you could, anyone could use the, um, grills, just like anyone could use the pavilions. You, the reservation is to reserve the spot to make sure that no one else has the spot. So we can't stop anyone from going up and using the park for a picnic if the, if there's no one at the pavilion. So, it's, it wouldn't, that, what you're saying would only cover if there's a reservation. It wouldn't cover if some random person just went up and cooked some hot dogs, so.
And I just wanted to know how we were handling the cleanup, or how it was gonna be distributed.
And there was nothing, there was, I think there was something in place for the reservations, but there was nothing in place formally before, but the grills have also not been able to be used for a very long time, so.
Are we also going to maintain and clean them on a regular basis?
I would assume we would need to, just like the pavilions.
Or they'll rot, like they're going to.
You know, we might wanna consider getting covers for them for the winter.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Considerable.
Right, because they're gonna be outside, it's snowy, and so if we can put covers on them, yeah, just like Gregor covering over them for the winters.
What if you were to put a sign saying, you know, please keep our area clean, clean up after yourself kind of, make it for, for the whole year, cold thing.
We installed, we, we installed how many do not litter signs throughout the city?
I didn't, I didn't know.
Yeah, we've been putting up do not litter signs everywhere, three hundred dollar fine, but the thing is, can you catch them? We don't have cameras everywhere, so that's the difficulty there. Can you catch the people actually littering?
And same with the dogs at the park. That's been another issue.
You have to be able to actually catch them.
Yeah. Councilman Gregor?
Okay. I apologize for being late. I had a, uh, situation I had to take care of. Uh, code enforcement, uh, financial report in May twenty twenty-one. Plumbing licenses, a hundred dollars for May, year-to-date, one thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. Building permits, May, one thousand sixty-six dollars, year-to-date, eight thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-two cents. Demolition permits, May, seventy-five dollars, year-to-date, one hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents. Soliciting permits, May, two hundred dollars, year-to-date, two hundred dollars. Chicken permits, May, seventy-five dollars, year-to-date, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Street opening permits, May, five thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars, year-to-date, twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. Magistrate code enforcement, May, was three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-three cents, year-to-date, was one thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. Health inspections, May, two hundred and seventy dollars, year-to-date, five hundred and seventy dollars. Habitation permits, two thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars for May, year-to-date, seven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Landlord fees, we have to return eight hundred and fifty dollars. That's a total refund so far of four thousand dollars. But that was for May. Year-to-date was nineteen thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Yardways pickup was seventy-five dollars for May, year-to-date was three hundred and fifty dollars. Line usage on sewer, for May, was four hundred and sixty-eight dollars, year-to-date, nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Total for May was nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-three cents, year-to-date, seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. Code enforcement activity report for May two thousand twenty-one. Habitation permits, twenty-four, correction letter seventy-nine. Animal complaints, eight. Miscellaneous complaints, ninety-four. Citations, four. Inspections, health, two. Building permits, four. Office meetings with residents, forty-eight. zoning permits, seven. Demo permits, one. Hearings, one. Plumbing permits, one. Palm Valley Emergency Medical Service, EMS report ending May twenty twenty-one. We had emergency calls of one hundred and twelve, two fire standbys, total incidents, one hundred and fourteen. Fire department report pending May twenty twenty-one. We had one assist police, one C O call, one wire is down, one tree down, three motor vehicle accidents, one EMS assist, two landing zones, two natural gas, one automatic fire alarm, Washington Township, one, one gas can fire alarm, one trash fire, two smokes in a structure, total calls were seventeen, total responding was two hundred and twenty-two. Average response per call was thirteen point eight five. Total man-hours, two hundred and thirty-three. I have the Recreation Board meeting minutes for May. They're here if anyone wants to see them.
Councilman Coles?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, following is my report. I am asking for a motion to approve the payment of invoices in the general funded amount of two hundred and twenty thousand, ninety-one dollars and twenty cents.
Second question. Call the roll.
Councilman Coles?
Yes.
Council, Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilor Jakowski? I'm sorry, I have a que, a couple of questions I have to, my apologies, I didn't know that it was necessary. These are expenditures we've already paid out. Is that correct?
Donor, is he already?
Yes, sir. So, we've already paid out for the police car, right? We paid for the first police car that we received, yes. What is the nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-nine cents under the general paid publisher?
That's the, uh, codification of the ordinances.
Excuse me?
The codification of the ordinances.
Okay. Uh, forty-four hundred dollars to make, uh, police funding and construction?
Towards the bottom.
Votorosolution. Oh, this is, that was for the, uh, handicap, uh, that was put on Third Street. We, we had handicap on Dunore, or, uh, I'm sorry, Scoobaker and Donor, that the fellow who has, uh, wheelchair was driving down Third Street, because there was no handicap, uh, ability to get on at the Third Street alley. So we put it on both sides, and, uh, at the same time, they were doing a, uh, curb opening to put a driveway into the parking lot down there, so we got a very, very good price for that.
Okay, thank you.
And crime files? For ten thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Crime files, that's for health, the health. Thank you.
Yes. Oh, I don't remember who voted out, so can we just do it again? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilor Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Coles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Sherrod?
Aye.
That way it's all in one section.
Okay, next item is, uh, the B on, on the list, and I'm asking for a motion to approve payment of invoices, uh, for the line usage in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second question. Call the roll.
Councilor Jakowski?
Yes.
Council, Councilman Coles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Sherrod?
Yes.
Next item, C. I'm asking for a motion to approve payment of invoices, uh, for debt servicing amount of one hundred thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty cents.
Second question.
Is that the deposit? Pardon me? Is that the deposit or the interest? That's the interest, uh, that we're paying, uh, in June, for, and to May. And the principal we paid in December, were, uh, three hundred and eighty-four thousand. That's on that loan? Yes.
Call the roll.
Councilman Coles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilor Jakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Sherrod?
Yes.
Next item, D. I'm asking for a motion to approve payment of invoices, uh, for, for the park fund in the amount of twenty thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Second question.
Okay, is that furniture? Those are the benches.
Yeah, I think that was in three hundred and eighty dollars.
For Mornau?
No, that's from, they're Josephs.
No, Josephs is like fifty-three ninety-six eighty.
I'm, I'm looking at the fifteen hundred. Oh, that's the white bench.
Oh, it's five thousand three hundred and ninety-six.
Yeah, that's the white bench.
No, those white benches were donated.
I was just wondering what they might be.
Those might be the grills. I think that's the grills. Is the National Outdoor Furniture, Inc. paying for the grills?
Under what?
National Outdoor Furniture, Inc. Is that the grills?
Yes, that, that's the fourteen hundred and fifty dollars of the white grills.
The white benches were donated.
So what's the five thousand two hundred and ninety-four?
To Josephs?
Yes. That's part of the, uh, isn't that the box? Yeah, the box is out here, yeah. Because they did it in two pages. They did the, the brick and the actual construction and plank.
Call the roll.
Councilman Coles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilor Jakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Sherrod?
Yes.
Next item is item E. I'm asking for a motion to approve the payment of invoices for recreation in the amount of one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eight cents.
Second question. Call the roll.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilor Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Coles?
Yes.
Mayor Sherrod?
Yes.
Next item, F. Large dollar amount, large dollar account balances for the month ending May. Number one in the general fund is seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Item two, debt services, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. Item three is parks and recreation is one hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. Number four, line usage is ninety-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-three cents. Number five item is liquid fuels in the amount of sixty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and five cents. That completes my report.
Thank you.
Question. Do we still have active health notes, council? That's, you wrote out, it'd be a council health note. I think that's been there for quite a while.
Yeah, the, um, health fund that's under is under the general fund.
We're gonna, the health one's totally different.
That's from the old, yeah, we're talking about the one from the old. I'd like to open the floor for-
Uh, Mayor, I can apologize for forgetting something before we go public comment, what we did executive session for.
Oh, yes, thank you.
You didn't notice.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion, I mean, I'd like to make a motion beginning the next pay period not to exceed twenty-nine and a half hours per week. pay period not to exceed twenty-nine and a half hours per week and any applicable overtime beginning more than forty hours a week. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilwoman Greger?
No.
Councilwoman Jaskowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Chara?
Yes. Now, I'd like to open the floor and public comment on any item.
Earlier, I was in the administration here. John Hart invite me and do this proper. I would like, if it's okay with the city, to put on a prayer meet, which would be on which I cleared over here supposedly open three dates, June thirty, July first, and July second. If you want to pass it down. If that passes, I'll get more of it lifted up. And see, the big thing about this is just like they said before, when when the thing about what happened in City Park here last night, fantastic, a lot of things like that should happen in this town. It's just a matter of getting other people, I mean, you guys, because you have the full, get organizations to, you know, participate in some of the things that we have. And you can beat City Park, which is one of the nicest places in the western Pennsylvania. But maybe we can open up the people's eyes. But mostly what what I'm concerned about is what's going on in our nation? Plus, the truth is, you know, everybody's beating up on the police. I'm pro police. See me later if you don't like it. Anyways, we also belong to the fire department. And behind the scene, there comes EMS. They're under the gun. You know, you get riots all over the United States, fires going on. Those people could be part of it. This is this is beloved. So this prayer meet is designed for first responders mostly, okay? If it's okay with you guys, I've got a lot of meat in this. To do this on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, which is another date, five o'clock to nine o'clock. It's it's described on the flyer. If this is fine, I'll go forward with this advertisement. I also have a interview tentatively ready to be published with before we move you guys. And.
Are you? Well, we'll have to we'll have to take a vote on it, but I mean, we could we could do a motion.
Do you have to have a special meeting?
No, we can make the motion. We just have to open it to the motion.
You just got to make sure there's nothing reserved for that those days.
Yeah, you said you already.
I might want to ask a question too. What would you say?
Not as there's nothing reserved for those days.
Did I was informed that it was not. I from that information received, I did have, excuse me, a conversation with John. John says come here on this date, and we go from there. Well, this is where we're at.
Well, I would like to make a motion to grant approval to use the City Park walking track for the red, white, and blue prayer meet on June thirtieth, July first, and July second at no cost. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any public comment on this specific item? Since it wasn't on the.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You'll make sure you'll do cleanup.
Definitely.
I know you will.
Oh, yeah.
I just want to make sure.
No, that's no problem. We're pushing it. And the other thing, and I would have said, being that there's not much of a crowd, I will give each one here one of these. So rather not take one, I'd rather have one in your hands because you can inform your.
Is there any are there any questions from council on the motion? Call the roll.
Councilwoman Greger?
Aye.
Councilwoman Jaskowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Chara?
Thank you. And I really nice to get to see if you come here any given day, five o'clock, nine o'clock.
Thank you.
We'll have a good time. It'll 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 come out throughout the valley. It'll benefit a lot of people, especially our first responders if they need help.
Any other public comment? Motion to adjourn at eight thirty-five. Thank you.